I believe the appointed hour has arrived. I'll call a meeting to order. It's our meeting of September 7th, which was delayed from the original Tuesday dates to accommodate staff's needs of catching up from the holiday. So could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, we can. Goldie?
Yes.
Hess?
Here.
Joss?
Here.
Hockla?
Here.
Gregor? Here. All right, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Just before we go to our agenda, I think we just ought to express our sympathies to, you know, the communities that were so drastically affected by this storm that rolled through the other night. The more I understand about the extent of the damage in both public and private, you know, it certainly is something that I think we dodged a bullet here in town, but certainly have to be aware of what our neighbors are going through and everything. So just I'll throw that out. Moving on back to the agenda, we have the consent agenda, which is item number four. As for the public that are watching, these are items that we regard as relatively routine. They're marked by asterisks on our prepared agenda, and unless councilors wish to have certain matters pulled out for a special discussion, they're usually adopted in one motion. So is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Moved by Councilor Hess?
I'll support it.
And supported by Councilor Goldie. Any further discussion or any wishing to have any items pulled from that? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Post. The consent agenda is adopted. Let's see, we move on then to the agenda, the appearances in public forum, I believe, in light of our discussion right before the meeting. Sir, there was a member of the public that wanted to briefly address us.
It was just you and Aurora's desire for campus business.
Yeah, now, I just want to make sure you're on the record. If you could give us your name and address, and we try to limit the remarks to three minutes.
Sure. My name is W. Sixberry. I live on a past like 4762 Bassett Road. I am looking after this up building for a possible marijuana manufacturing business. I want to know exactly whether or not Aurora is going to be for that or not. I need to get started right away. We're going to be at RRB, and we're going to need a manufacturing business somewhere in this range. It's either going here or by Wabik. And so if you guys aren't for it, I would like to know that right away, because I need to start putting a lot of money into this business.
Well, I think, if I could speak to the council.
I'm not saying like we decide tonight or anything, but I would need to know in the next three months.
I think the councils made a very firm record that's welcoming to businesses in the community, but we've also been struggling with our marijuana ordinances. I'd suggest that you meet with the city administrator to provide sort of a basic outline of timetables, what kind of investments.
Well, we're open until 2025, because that's just licensing and all less, but then 2025, I need to open energy and work more competitive, and so I need to get my site set right now. Top building, look where I'd like the size of it. I'd like to recycle a building. You guys are lucky, would like to recycle a building. There's mostly what I need is there. It will take some updating and stuff, but the property itself is worth. The reason that I would go to Aurora would be just for that building. I would save a lot of money by just going into there versus having to track up something which would take me a while somewhere else.
I guess what I would like to see, like when you bring it to the city administrator, I'd like to see the proposal, what it looks like, what the hire, I mean, what, how many people you're going to hire. I would like to see a whole, but I want to see it in a business plan. I want to see it in an absolute business plan, so that way we can actually see what's going to be coming into our town, what the wages would be, et cetera. So it'd be nice to see a business plan when you bring it to the city administrator, so we can all have that in front of us.
Yeah, so appreciate your bringing the matter before us. We're all well aware of it, and if you could then exchange contact information with the city administrator, I think we do meet again in two weeks.
Yes.
Well, actually, less than two weeks.
Yeah.
And that might be a matter that we could have some response to you.
Tony, do you have a card or anything like that?
I don't with me, but I'll just, I'll look you up and email you over my business plan is all.
Yeah, and come in and sit down with me, and we'll just really go over it, and I know what they're looking for, and we'll just, we'll work with you.
And I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
It sounds interesting.
Well, and just with that size building, we are looking at probably about a million dollars a year to start, and then three to five once I get cooking. And then you guys would get some tax, some of that.
Great.
And that's like, as soon as I get cooking, I'm about three months away from this property. I know the business well. I'll show you guys the plan. Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Seeing no other members of the public, we could turn down reports from our staff members. Turning first to our library.
Thanks, thank you very much. Well, we have lots of changes going on. Some of you may have heard, we have new hours now, so we'll be open Mondays through Friday from 10 to 5:00, and now open on Saturdays from 10 to 2:00. This weekend will be our first Saturday, and we're hoping to provide patrons more opportunities. We hope to start hosting groups on Saturdays for different activities, such as Board Game Day, or different crafting groups, or book clubs. So hopeful that that will work out. We're going to try till the end of the year and see where it goes and adjust from there. We have our fall book sale coming up, which is hosted by the Aurora Friends of the Library, and we're accepting donations of gently used books and multimedia. The book sale is not set until October 19th, 20th, and 21st. Just putting it out there that we are still open to donations, and this book sale is actually going to be baskets and books. We will be doing asylum option for donated baskets of fun, so we welcome donated baskets as well for that, for the asylum option. Airhood Library System, along with the Duluth Book School, has created and provided kits for us to hand out, which are finished paper stars, so it's basically making a star out of paper. They're really neat, actually. Well, they look really neat. I don't know how easy they are or anything, but they'll be available at all the libraries from September 15th through the 29th, and there are a limited number of kits per library, so if you do want one, stop in and get one right away. This project is funded in part or in whole by the Minnesota Arts and Cultural Heritage Fund. And, yep, we just try to keep continuing to make changes in the library, and we do understand that change is hard for some people, us included, so it is quite the adjustment period, but we're just trying to make areas flow better, provide more services and space to our patrons, update areas to make them more accessible, user friendly, and safe. We are welcome to suggestions and ideas, not that they will all be used, but we do welcome them, and we want to hear from the patrons and love the input as to what you're actually looking for at your local library, and we appreciate everybody's patience and support as we make these changes.
Thank you. Any questions, councilors? All right, city administrator, do we turn next to the city engineer?
Yeah. Keep my updates short. I did have some words with tonight to update on West First Avenue, but I think we're going to hold off till the next meeting. No immediate action needed. Now, after the hour-long presentation from Dan, I think it'd be good to push that. Pine Grove Park updates, we did have the pre-construction meeting with the contractor, Masabe Batuminus. Sure you've seen, they haven't quite started yet. They've indicated sometime mid-September, they're planning to start construction of the parking lot. Some additional work, we're working with staff to prepare a stormwater grant application to the MPCA to look at some stormwater drainage issues around town, specifically the Derrick Hurst property.
Bill Crete.
What's that?
Bill Crete.
Bill Crete, his property, and getting some funding from the state to help analyze those problems. That application's due next Thursday. Working with staff to get that submitted, so don't see any issue there. I think ultimately our ask is somewhere around the 75K range. So additionally, we work with staff to develop a pavement maintenance project for next year. I don't remember the exact stopping point, so it was Fourth Avenue.
Yeah, we're looking to do in front of the school some seal coating, so it'll be from Fourth Street all the way to the main intersection of the school there, and then we also budgeted monies from Third Street, so Third Street East, which would be the auto parts store to the Lutheran Church. So we'll chip seal that and get that started, and the idea is the following year we can finish that one up.
So the idea that chip seals, it's just adding some additional life to the pavement structure. Those pavements are in decent shape, so if we can give them some extra life now, they'll last even longer. So versus if you get to the alligator cracking phase, there's really no, there's no stopping that. The damage is done at that point. Also working with staff to identify potential projects for 2024 CDBG funding, making sure those funds are what you could use on infrastructure. So, quick update on First Avenue, we are working through the preliminary design phase. We are, we applied for the bonding assistance in June. Me and Mayor Gregor are presenting to the Bonding Committee on September 27th, I believe.
I believe, yeah.
It's a short, five-minute presentation. We have a few tricks up our sleeve. Hopefully, we can wow them a little bit and secure some money from the state, so.
Few theatrics.
Yes, yes. So we'll bring those to council after, so if they want a reference.
Well, thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Should we move then to the city attorney?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to report.
Well, it's good to know.
It's the warm body standing in here tonight, so.
All right. I appreciate your presence, Louie. Who knows what issues make.
Oh, we'll see.
All right, let's see, our city administrator?
Yeah, my updates are just what's on the agenda tonight, so I'll just address them as we go through them.
All right, well, let's see, that concludes our staff presentations, and then each councillor can give a report this evening. Let's see, I think we start with Councilor Hess, right?
Okay. I don't have a whole lot. Little update on pickleball court, got a little landscaping left to do. Hopefully, the next week they're supposed to stripe it, and then the nets are on back order, but we've got four temporary ones to use in the meantime, so hopefully then the next week we can be playing pickleball. The other update, we met with, um, utility combination specialists, we have 14 people apply for the job, went through the applications, got it down to four, or down to five interviewed. Four, because one didn't show up for the interview, so I'll let Luke get into that later.
That's right.
And another thing I'd like to give a hats off to Luke, with all the trees White Lakes had down, he sent two of our employees over there, which I really appreciate, because that's what we're here for, to work together, so, but thank you for doing that, Luke.
You bet.
Best traditions of the range, yeah, stretching each other's back cases.
They had a lot of damage over there.
Yeah.
That concludes your report?
Yeah.
Very good, thanks very much. Councilor Goldie?
The only thing I wanted to talk about tonight was we have the election coming up, and if anyone thinks they do a good job as councillor or have interest in it, it would be good for them to come up and get some information and inquire about it. And also, we have a lot of committees in Aurora that, and a lot of them could use more people, young people, new ideas. You could check to see what's available and maybe get active in the community, and that's really all I have tonight.
Very good. Thank you, councillor. Let's see, councillor Joss?
Yep, so, let's see, planning and zoning, the committee that's, the committees that are on planning and zoning, people are still applying for improvement permits, so this is a good thing. East Range Public Safety Board, we did sign a joint power agreement for mutual short-term staffing services with, with Eblith.
Eblith.
Eblith, excuse me. And we did, we did hire internally school resource officers, so Scott Garrett will be our resource officer at the school, because Jordan Klobstad will be leaving in October, so Jordan's going to be giving a little bit of assistance.
Mentor.
Yeah, getting into that role. It's a big, that's a big switch, going from the road to the school. Um, let's see, I was, I had, I had the pleasure of meeting with Paul Pelter from the new Rams. I don't even know what you would call him.
Executive Director.
Executive Director, whatever. Filled him in on what's going on in the city of Aurora. He was excited to hear about the stuff that we had going on, and I think he's going to be a great fit for the area. He's got lots of great ideas, really, really excited about welcoming, welcoming him to the Rams Board. I'd like to say thanks for, thanks to Public Works, to Luke for, again, sending over people to White Lakes. I did hear a lot of good things, so accolades to the Public Works and Luke for sending over guys. Um, let's see, you want to, two little ques, two questions. Where are we at with the light on the tower by the Chena Center, because people are still saying that there's no light on the tower, and in their contract, it said that there'd be a light? And where are we at at the Shearing Lands? The transfer of the Shearing Lands? The Steve Shearing? Yeah, because it's not on our agenda anymore, so I just, I, it's been on the agenda since I started here five, six years ago, so.
There would be the temptation to turn to the city attorney, but I have a feeling he's not first on this.
Nope, so those are just questions, those are the two questions that I had asked, been asked.
Look at you in the headlights.
Sorry, sorry about that, Mitch.
If you could bring the message back, but the concern was about the transfer of property related to the Shering operations.
Mike is well aware of it, it was on our agenda for about six months, and we just removed it because it wasn't getting done, and he said he would take care of it, and we're just kind of trying to find out where it is. As far as the contract goes, that sale is before my time, so I will look and try and find it.
Yeah, that was a distinct thing.
There is supposed to be a light on it.
Yep.
So if I can find that, and then I'll reach out with the copy of that to the owners, and.
Okay.
When you reach out to them, tell them to clean up their light that they have around here too. Never pick up all their garbage, so they'll need to put the cover.
Okay, I think we can get some pictures taken and tattooed.
Thank you.
On the other hand, we are getting much better cell service, so we need to balance out our concerns and try to make it a little more perfect.
Mine is pretty good.
Councillor Hockley?
I just want to echo the thanks to Luke and Public Works for helping out in these sister communities. I think this is important, good faith and helping each other out, good neighbors. And other than that, just the items on the agenda for the parks, so.
Very good, thank you, councillor. Let's see, I'll try to be briefer than usual. The water report, we had a bid opening today, it was a reflection of new bidding requirements that we received on our federal fundings for that. The bid, there was only one bid, came in higher, and basically now we're going back to kind of reconsider how to re-approach either the bid that we received or going out for bids in an alternative form in the near future. And then, just to commend everybody that helped for the, we had a public information meeting on the 24th of August at the Community Center. It wasn't a large attendance, but I thought that the questions that were asked were excellent, and hopefully the answers that were given really addressed some of those concerns. One perennially questioning individual seemed satisfied, and that voided out the spirits of everybody at the meeting, so. Other meetings going on, let's see, the East Range Drive Powers Board Housing Partnership has been going on, and I know the, through the IRRB had a meeting today also, but collectively those efforts are, seem to be really bearing fruit and bringing things into focus. Those of you that may know, Bawabik had a Alpine or Bavarian Village, sort of an incubator project that was going, which the East Range Board had approved being applicant for, and that's kind of put on the back burner's right now. In line with your meeting with Paul, I had a meeting with Sean Haney, who's now the new member of the North Van, and took him around the community, and he was actually really grateful to see these sites in person that we have listed on our available properties, websites and everything else. And then I think the Strange Drive Board assets getting repayments of some of the COVID assistance loans, is looking at new loan program going forward on that. Let's see, the library board, I see that Jen's gone, but we had a really good budget-setting discussion on the board there. Let's see, and as Josh alluded to, we're anticipating going before the House Representatives Capital Investments Committee meeting on the 27th to seek, what, $3 million, I believe, for the First Street.
First Avenue.
First Avenue North, West First Avenue North.
Yes.
So that hopefully will bear fruit, and it's good to have that opportunity. Cap Board meeting, just some insight going on in the range. New Range has now hired 40 employees. They are moving ahead that front in optimist, optimistically anticipating being able to overcome the legal obstacles that have been coming up lately. They're extensively deconstructing, I think you see, she said about a quarter-mile-long building, I'm not all that familiar with the LTB facility. They're salvaging all the structural seal they can, they're going down to the foundations, basically revamping that entire campus that they're going to be working from and inheriting. So I thought that was kind of interesting, and then we got an explanation of a Luncor still advancing on its plans to become sole owner of the entire operations, which shouldn't affect the existing permits, but will result, I think, a lot of individuals invested in polymath, and will probably be one of those situations where they buy out the investors. So those are some of the activities going on at some of the meetings I've gone to. So we can move on then to the agenda. Let's see, old business, 16, 16.1, the Masabe East Football, or Softball Booster Gambling Proceeds Request. City administrator?
Yes, this was on our agenda for a little short time here. Masabe Softball Boosters have a batting cage, which they would like to assemble at Pine Grove Park. It's gone through the Park Committee, they approved the project, they approved the location of it. They, the boosters have raised $6,000, the cost for it is around $11,000. They're requesting gambling proceeds up to $5,000, so whatever the council would like to allot, they would accept gladly anything of. We removed it just to see if the school would help out with some of it. The athletic director and the superintendent chatted, and they feel that there are batting cages on their complex, this is a city field, and they do not have funds for it that are designated, so they cannot go anywhere to it. So it's back now on our plate.
Councillor Hockley?
Well, my concern would be that those batting cages serve the male athletes, and the school district should equally support financially their female athletes. If they're, the home, is the home field for the spring female softball players Pine Grove Berdice Field?
No, it's, it's, they consider it to be the football field, the turf field.
So they, so if they're giving their male and female athletes equal place to play ball, the male, the male athletes get a field, and the female athletes get a concession prize of the football field. It's not a softball field, it's not the same equipment. And isn't it equal?
So.
Isn't it about equity and giving the same to female athletes as males?
Do you feel that message got conveyed to the school?
Yeah, it did get conveyed to them. Their response was there are batting cages up there that the females can use, and they can play all of their games on the football turf field if they want to. So that's what was left there. That's all, that's all I can do, but it's, I could pass.
Well, if anything, at a bottom line, it would seem the girls' team said that practices could benefit from additional facilities to play.
No, I am in support, I'm in support of placing the batting cages at Berdice Field. I feel like our summer athletes will also benefit, our summer ball will also benefit from the batting cages. I would just think that Masabe East School would want some skin in the game and donate even a very small amount of $500 to $1,000 to show a support for their female athletes, because the sports complex, well, it revolves around males, right? Females are now playing on a male football field. They're playing on a football field instead of actual softball or baseball field.
So given your support of.
Where's the basis? Where's the permanent basis? Where's the equal equipment?
Any suggestions of how we could get that message across while still supporting?
I think public television is a great means. I think writing an email to the superintendent or the athletic director. I think the public should get involved and demand that they have equal space, supplies, and equipment for their male and female athletes. It's 2023, and we're still fighting this glass ceiling.
Yeah.
Of gender. I mean, it's ridiculous.
I thought when they approached us for permission to put a batting cage at Eddie Berdice Field, they had said that they wouldn't be asking for any money from the city, they would fundraise to get it done.
And I believe they did every effort to do that.
Okay.
They, they had, they did the concession, they did, they asked local nonprofits for money, they did a spaghetti feed.
They've raised $6,000, and the other, the other point is, is that it's not, the softball boosters is taking it under their wing to put the cage in and do the work for it, but it's also, it will be used for youth sports.
Yep.
It'll be used for boys and girls in our summer sport programs. So it's, it's for everybody to use.
And I understand it is on city property, that's why the school wasn't in support of it, but I just thought they'd support the female athlete people.
So maybe one path forward on that would be to approve funding, as they indicated, up to $5,000, but also directing myself or the city administrator to communicate directly to the superintendent the concerns we have, they'd be glad.
And if you craft a letter, I will gladly sign it under your, under your name.
All right, well, I was going to say, we can collaborate on a letter.
And I think it's a great show of support of this city to fully support that batting cage, not only for our female athletes, but all athletes for the summer. So I would make a motion to pay, to take, was it, up to $5,000 out of our gambling proceeds to pay for the batting cage.
I'll support.
And that, does that include then the accompanying course of law?
And, and then maybe a separate, after that motion, then you make a second, a second motion.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. All right, the motion carries, and then.
I would also like to make a motion that we craft a letter and have a, and/or have a conversation with the school district regarding their decision on the batting cage.
When you say we could.
Could it be, I would help you, Luke and I. Would that be acceptable?
I think, I'm certainly willing, you seem willing. I do feel you've gone to the trough too many times there.
He's already asked too many times.
All right, maybe councillor Hockley and I could be a new voice and kind of put together some communication, either directly or immediately.
Okay.
And do we need a conversation for that?
I made that motion.
Oh, you made a motion and supported it? All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? All right. Taking care of that, moving on to, and we don't have any other old business, so if you.
Nope, that was it.
That was it, okay. Moving to new business, 17.1, HRA's Levy Presentation. We have the Chair of the HRA with us today, Mary Malarri. Do you want to give some background? I think we have in our packets, right? Copies of the budget for this current year and the ones for the next year? It's not in there?
It should be in. It's here. It's in our package. As the mayor stated, I'm Mary Malarri, Chair of the HRA, and I'm speaking for the and I'm speaking for the board, which is composed of Michelle Lammy, Mary Lockwood, Paul Stark, and then Dan Godey is our city liaison. I'd like to thank the council for this opportunity to appear and request a levy and also to give you a brief review of what we've been doing this year. Last year's resolution, now this is, will be our third year to request a levy. And last year, the resolution that the city council signed directed us to do a housing study and also to do the mini grant program. It turned out that the St. Louis County and East Range Joint Powers worked together and paid for a lovely housing market study, which is really turning up to be an important piece in any kind of housing moves that we're going to make for, for the city. So with that in mind, and we did not know that that was in the works already, but we realized then that we could increase our mini grant program, which we did, increasing it from $5,000 to $10,000. And we actually have given 11 $1,000 grants this year, currently waiting on two more to come in. It's been a very successful program, lots of good response and some really nice improvements in residences in the city. And we plan to continue it in 2024. Other things we've done this year. We invited Jordan Ronsky, the Blight Officer, to speak to us about his, what he does. And we also asked Bruce Richardson from New Range Copper Nickel to talk to us about housing with PolyMet or the former PolyMet. Mary Lockwood, our member, is on the Housing Institute along with Norma Jean. And we have spent time and effort again this year maintaining the North Main Business Center. Al Hodnik has been a great help with that, both because he knows that building so well and he's done a lot of the work, such as replacing a sump pump. We are investigating the cost of foam insulation for the North Main Business Center building for the heat issue. And we are, just a half an hour ago, I received an email. This is really fresh news, from Ben DiNucci. He said, "I've sold Ebbith Market and now have a non-compete in place. As such, I cannot be involved with another grocery business in that area. I can't speak for Mr. Fregnito's interest in the project, but would venture he is unwilling to go it alone. Unfortunately, I do not see the project moving forward at this time." Not a surprise, but we now then need to do some work with Joel, our attorney, to have a mutual release document with the three developers so that it's clear of their interest and intentions. And so we will move forward with that. Now, also, we in September are going to sign a nice document to Zup North, making the loan that we gave them for storefront renovation back five years ago into a grant. That's been our program. And the Hive was a recent one we did also. So that money of $8,000 will be a grant then to Zup North. For the 2024 budget, which you have received in your packets, you can see that our levy amount is $15,147. And our plan is to work again with the mini grants, possibly extend them. And I participated in the Housing Resource Forum today on Zoom and so many of the grant programs require a one-to-one match. So we need some money in our, in our budget to possibly participate in some big project in the future. We'd be willing to do storefront grants and we're aware also that the St. Louis County program with the new highway coming through will be doing some of that and something we could possibly cooperate with. And then we have that elephant in the room, the North Main Business Center. We have to keep funds available for whatever might come up. We're going to find out what it costs to insulate the ceiling with foam. And then, you know, after we finalize things with the grocery store developers, we can seek other possible renters or buyers of that building. I'd just like to say that this levy is our only source of income. And again, we need money to function and we, I feel we work responsibly with what we have. So I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration and we hope that you will grant this levy. And then I'm available, available if you have any questions.
Counselors, any questions?
What is a levy? There's nothing in our.
It says .0185.
That's what I was going to say. Yeah, same as last year. It's set by state statute. Last year we got $11,000. It, well, it totally depends on, if everybody pays their taxes, that's what we'll get. If they don't, you know, if people don't, we don't get. And it comes to us in two payments. So we don't get it all as a single amount.
Other questions? The packet contains a proposed resolution 2023-29, which would authorize pursuant to statute, the .0185% levy for the benefit of the HRA.
Pardon? Pardon?
I'll support.
And supported. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to 17.3, the splash pad closing date. That's, is that informational or do we have to make a decision on that?
It was previously decided at the parks meeting last year, at the end of last season, that it would close after the Labor Day holiday.
Yeah. And I don't think we need to make any motion on that. I think we can just announce to the public that after September 10th, it will be closed. September 10th is the last day that we'll have the splash pad open.
That will work.
All right.
Works with, the parking lot worked better too.
Absolutely.
So duck tail nicely.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it could coincide with A&amp;W weekend closing too.
Well.
Perfect.
Kind of hand in hand, right?
Almost a city holiday. There we go. All right, moving on to item 17.4, that we have a request to waive the Community Center fee for the citywide garage sale that's scheduled for later this month.
Yep, yeah, we just would provide the Community Center for tables to be purchased at $20 a table. That would help offset the cost of using the Community Center individually. It will also help fund the mats the city's gonna produce in the train. We have somebody who stepped up and volunteered to assume responsibility for getting the key and making sure tables are set up and everything, figuring out how to follow it. So we're just looking to waive the fee for that event.
And that event will take place in the spring?
No, it's gonna take place in the fall, September 16th.
September 16th, for those that are watching and.
Yep.
Presentation here. So is there a motion to approve waiving the Community Center fee for that event?
I'll make a motion.
Move, support?
I'll support.
Moved and supported. Further discussion? Seeing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's great the way the counselors are cooperating and making these motions. 17.5, the proposed columbarium purchase. The city administrator, do you want to fill us up on the status I have prepped?
We have two spots that have been prepped and are poured and ready to go to receive two of the larger columbarium. We received a quote for one of them and asked for a second quote since we have two spots there to see if there'd be any cost savings for getting both delivered and shipped at the same time. There indeed was a significant savings to the two of them, $10,000. So the quote is for $64,000. What we're proposing is we will take $24,000, some change from the previous sales of the niches that have been sold since 2021. And we'll use that as our down payment. Twenty, we'll take $20,000 out of the ARPA funds to fund $20,000 of that and then the other $20,000 we'll budget for the next year. These will be, it takes about six months to get them. So by the time they get here, we'll have the ARPA funds, which are already sitting there. We'll have the budgeted funds for next year. And using those three chunks of money, we'll be taking care of. We've kind of looked at the past sales from the ones that we've had, what we have open and then the rate of, you know, using that kind of formula. It's about 15 years in the future, look at us. So even if you were to say eight years, you purchased the next one at inflated purchases, you know, inflation plus the $10,000, I assume 15, 20, or more.
So I believe a motion had been ordered to authorize the purchase.
I'll support.
Moved and supported. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. It's a real investment, as long as we're talking about always investment strategies. Sounds like a great one. 17.6, I have before us a proposed resolution 2023-3 for crack ceiling services provided through St. Louis County.
Correct, St. Louis County goes out and does a bid and they do, they do the work of doing, taking all the bids, getting competitive bid, and then municipalities and townships are allowed to get onto that with them. We have to approve a resolution, we budgeted $21,000 for cracks, crack ceiling. It was crack drilling, crack ceilings, crack ceiling. For next year, it requires the council to pass a resolution saying we'll use those funds.
So we have those funds available?
Yeah, there'll be budgeted funds for it.
Budgeted, correct. Is there a motion to approve the proposed resolution?
I'll make.
Is that cracked ceiling or chip ceiling?
It's chip ceiling. Yep, it's chip seal.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll make a resolution to pass 2023-30.
All right, is there support for that?
I'll support it.
Supported. Further discussion? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have ceiling, moving to 17.7. There's a proposed resolution 2023-31, authorizing the purchase of some blighted properties by the city. City Administrator, the only thing I noticed when I was reviewing it, I didn't see whether the resolution passed, how much we paid for.
Oh, it's $500 total. Yep, for both lots, $250 a lot.
All right, and those, we previously discussed this.
We've been discussing this and talking about it. We finally came to an agreement. We've got the will from the property owner. We've got the documents all drawn up, it's all ready to go to the agreed upon price of $250 per lot. And then now we will take care of getting the blighted structures off the lots.
So with the understanding that you're authorizing $500 expenditure for that, is there a motion to approve the proposed resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Move, support? Second, further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Turning on to the PFA loan request, which is, is a proposed resolution 2023-32 from, for a loan from the Public Facility Authority in an amount to be.
Five million?
Yeah, $5 million or such a lesser amount might be bid.
Up to $5 million.
All right, city administrator, any background to explain on that?
Yep, so this would be the city's water, when the water treatment plant has been out, the $5 million debt that the city will be taking on. This is just a resolution being passed that says we will authorize funds for a $5 million loan. We'll raise rates to accommodate that. It's up to $5 million and it's, it's only good if the project is bid and let out. So this is just putting the force in front of the.
And this is the wastewater?
No, this is the water treatment.
Well, this is the water treatment.
Yep, this is for a water treatment.
The first part of the resolution maybe should.
Does it say?
Clean water?
Waste water?
Oh, okay, my apologies.
So it's a water treatment system.
Yep, for the water treatment system.
And I believe this would be consistent with our meeting last summer where we had a joint meeting with the town and anticipated that we'd be issuing or taking on a loan from the PFA for that. So is there a motion to approve the amended resolution 2023-32?
I'll make that motion.
Then I'll support it. It's following that project. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Turning to item 17.9, proposed resolution 2023-33, stormwater drainage. It says here in the note I had that we'd be getting it from Bolton Inc. Do we have that proposed resolution?
Oh, we do have it. It's not included in it, should be.
It's 17.9, it's in there?
Yeah, 17.9, it is. So accept funds for the underlying project as seen fit by the city administrator. So this is not an expenditure, it's an application for funds?
Yep, so what this is, is we're supporting, what we've done is we've, we've, we're having Bolton Inc. draft up applications to go after grant dollars to look at our stormwater infrastructure. Up to $75,000, I think is what we're looking for. So all we're doing is supporting that, we've got stormwater infrastructure that needs to be replaced, needs to be looked at, needs to be surveyed, studied, designed. And that's what we're doing, is supporting the application. It will help, help our grant when we're going after these applications.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Support?
I have discussion.
Discussion.
So previously we've talked about placing a fee on the stormwater. We, it was looked into probably four years ago. And Aurora has one of the lowest fees attached to their stormwater. So would that be something we can look at now that you're starting to look at this, possibly this project that we could increase this stormwater fee?
Because there's some places where we were looking, it was like some places are being charged 50 cents.
Yeah, that's pretty low.
That's low.
Our neighboring communities are, I think, $6 and $8 respectively, who are 50 cents.
So for purposes of the grant, would, if we were going to consider increasing that fee, would it be better to do it after we apply for the grant? Or would that be an incentive to get the grant?
I think it's kind of independence. The independent, the grant is more to look at structural issues of the stormwater system, not necessarily financial.
Financial, but if we were to get ahead of it and have fees in place.
Well, that's just the idea. This is for the grant, the study of it, and once we get that, then we need money just to actually perform the work. So this is something I was going to bring to you as raising the fees of because the neighboring communities are at $8 and $6 respectively. We've used a significant amount of the balance for the Pine Grove Park parking lot funds, I think about $40,000. And I've asked Kimberly what pollen it would take to replenish that. And that 50 cents, it's like five years.
Yeah.
So we do.
So we can adopt the resolution as proposed to initiate the exploration of the grant availability and then have some of the assurances would be brought to another council meeting to discuss the raising of the rates?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the proposed resolution?
There has been.
There has been?
Yep.
All right, that's right, you were discussing that.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We manage the 1710, we have a proposed resolution 2023-34, confirming our polling place designation for 2025, right?
It's for this year.
For this year?
This is this year.
Yep. And this is just something we do every year, doesn't mean in our form place until the elections.
All right, is there a motion to adopt the proposed resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Move, support?
Support.
Supported by Councilor Godey, okay? Further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to 1711, we have a request from Celebrate Aurora for the city support essentially in the pumpkin festival. And city administrator, I assume you discussed this with them?
Yeah, they've met with us and staffed. There's nothing that's really been changed on the request from last year. So this is just the annual support that the city provides for the pumpkin festival.
And we can do that by motion, right? Is there a motion to approve providing that support for the event?
I'll make a motion for discussion.
Move for discussion. Is there support? Moved and supported. Councilor Ron?
I just, the second paragraph, it reads that they'll be using the Aurora Fire Department and, and with the, and also the expectation that Aurora Fire Department will help with the pumpkin weighing contest, I believe it reads. Have, did Celebrate Aurora contact the fire department and, or did you and ask? Have, did Celebrate Aurora contact the fire department, and, or did you, and ask for their willingness to volunteer their time on that weekend?
That's been something that they've done every year, if it's something that they would like to not support anymore.
Well, it's always nice to be asked.
Yeah.
So, I think it'd be important to bring it to the fire department's meeting, business meeting, and ask for their help versus delegating to volunteers, they'll show up, but heavy on the volunteers.
Yes.
I know they talked about the pumpkin fest, and they were gonna have the raffle drawing for their, their gun raffle at the pumpkin fest.
Okay, so they already intend to be there?
Well, that's the way I take it.
Okay.
You could approve it dependent upon, you know, the fire department being contacted and reached over two.
I'll make a motion, to that extent.
All supported.
All right, move in supported, further discussion, seeing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good point. Step fifteen twelve, terrible gambling, requested authorization for the Knights of Columbus, right, for a big event.
Yep, and this is something that they do every year, they're just asking for approval for them for their bingo, something we've supported in the past.
I'll make a motion to support that.
Move support?
Support.
Move in supported, further discussion, seeing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seventeen point one three, long-term rental licenses, we have two categories of licenses here, the long-term and the short-term, seventeen thirteen, we approved some long-term, right?
Yeah, these are just other ones that are coming in, so as you come up and you're seeing them in there, these are ones that are all compliant and have been approved and inspected, and they're not any of the ones that we're waiting on, they're ready to go.
All right, so, would be in order to have a motion to approve the granting of licenses to these facilities?
Sure, yes.
All right, is there a motion of that effect?
I'll move.
So, move support?
All supported.
Move in supported, further discussion?
I will abstain from voting.
Oh, okay, abstain. The record of our flight council, Joss, has to abstain from voting. All right, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those licenses are approved, now turning to the short-term rental licenses, same, same situation, I'm assuming that, in addition to our previous approvals, we're approving two new ones, and I assume councilor Joss is going to abstain from voting on this.
That is correct.
All right, is there a motion to approve the, the, motion?
All supported.
Motion made and supported, further discussion, if not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we'll have the extension of councilor Joss.
I did have one question on this, is there, does, there's a few other, does Dolan House have to apply for a short-term rental license, because they have a lot of short-term rentals?
I would think so.
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe somebody can reach out to Vida, I think that's who they'd reach out to, be Vida.
We have, Mary Malari's on the Northern Lights board, maybe you can reach out and...
Pardon, I don't know who the Northern Lights board.
I think we did send out a series of them already, but I will check to see how many of the letters that we sent out.
Because I'm assuming it has to be inspected as well, then?
Yeah, yep.
I'm pretty sure I talked to Vida during the music festival, and directed her her songs.
Yeah, because she asked me about inspections, too.
All right, so, let's see, that was very forward on seventeen point one four, seventeen point one five, the library board assignment.
I didn't see anything in the packet about that.
No, I believe that Kim Zinsky is looking to get on to the library board.
I believe that's what it is.
Yep.
And the library board, and the liaison that the library board did for recommending her for appointment to the library board, and so, since I'm on the liaison, I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment of Kim Zinsky, too.
And I'll support that.
And it's been supported, further discussion, if not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, getting Kim back in action. Seventeen point one six, approve working toward a forest management plan with the DNR, city administrator?
Yep, so, here, part of what you've heard from the Ellers' presentation is that one way for our tax capacity to go down is to get some more industry in town, more commercial property, some of the property that we've been thinking about is on the one thirty-five, one ten, by the sign coming into town here. I've reached out to the I triple R B, and there is grant dollars that are available for, for possibly, you know, having, Josh can talk on this, surveys done, and...
It's called an ALTA survey, it's just a detailed property survey, making sure all the boxes are checked from a legality standpoint.
You said an ALTA?
Yep, yep.
So, we're looking at doing that, as part of that, there's a lot of timber out there that we'd like, not, not clear cut, but we'd like to select cut, the DNRs indicated that they would do that for us, they'll lock out, do a forest management plan, and do a select cutting out there, and then that would help with two things, it would generate some revenue to use for some of that fifty to fifty, fifty-fifty matching grant money for this project, and it would also clear it out so we can see what we have out there. If you sell out those lots to developers and whatnot, they would receive the money on the timber sales, so we may as well do something with it, leaving the larger trees there and keeping that nice natural aesthetic appearance until that happens. So, that's just, we're not actually going to move through with the timber sale until it's all marked up and ready to go, and then we would present that to you to vote on it later date. So, you're just approving us to go and cruise it and walk it, and look at some select chunks of land in town for, for a couple of select cutting.
Motion to approve that?
So, so, sorry.
All right, support.
I'll support.
Move in supported, further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Glad to hear you're thinking of industrial there, because we've, we've heard the noise, you know, from the sharing operations and everything, and in that area, I think residential would be somewhat adversely impacted by that, so, yeah. Let's see, seventeen point one seven, there's a document in there, thanks to actually approve an addendum to our agreement from the end of understanding with local forty-nine, city administrator?
So, I did speak with the reorganization committee members on this, and Doug as well, so bringing everyone up to date. What we had determined when we did budgeting is that by staffing a full-time employee on a Saturday and Sunday, as far as they're scheduled in the contract, they are paid overtime, regularly scheduled weekend shifts, so that increased our budget significantly. So, what we did is, we have met, before this became a problem, I wanted to thank Dan Maddock, the Forty-Niners' business agent, and all of the union employees who were meeting ahead of time before it became an issue, they're very open to trying to come up with a solution, between all of us, we sat down together, it was very amicable. What we're going to do now is have all of our staff, water wastewater staff, work Monday through Friday, forty hours a week, and the weekend coverage will be covered by one overtime call on a Saturday, one overtime call on a Sunday, and it can be offered up to anybody who's trained in, so we could have rather than two people, or three people checking, we could have up to six, so it offers more flexibility, and it also saves the city probably about six thousand dollars a year. So, we'll save money, we'll have staff here Monday through Friday, forty hours a week versus weekends, and they get their overtime calls still, so everyone's being that, so this is one of those win-win situations for everybody that we all agreed on, and it really worked out well.
Good work, and it's always nice, labor issues to reach some degree of meeting the lines and everything. So, is there a motion to approve that, the addendum to the local union?
I'll make a motion.
Move support?
Support. Go ahead, Dan, sorry, Dan.
Councilor Goye supporting, councilor passes, made a motion, further discussion, if not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nice to have that issue resolved, it's getting, let's see, the seventeen point one eight, twelve, temporary seasonal worker, I don't know, but I reviewed materials on that, but...
Yeah, so in the past, we've hired, we've hired people to come in for four or five weeks, at two, three days a week. This is kinda that season where our summer staff is gone, back, back to school, back to college, but there's still grass to be cut, so this is pretty much just for, for grass, running garbage bags, emptying old garbage cans on Main Street. There's a gentleman who put in an application, and we've got about seventeen hundred dollars left in that budget, so we wouldn't exhaust that, and I'm guessing three days a week probably take us into the first week out of work, so this is a very temporary hire that...
So, essentially, you employ them to the extent that the money's available?
That's it.
So, with a genetic seed.
Is there a motion to approve that?
So...
Has there support from councilor Goye? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then, our hiring of a utility combination specialist, there's some inclusion to that, the interview process, city administrator, do you want to bring us up to date while we are there?
Yep, as Richard said, we had fourteen applications, one thing that's interesting about this is because it was fifty-fifty between public works and water and wastewater, and because we didn't require licenses, but we required trades, we had just a very wide variety of applicants. We had people who were mill rates, people who were diesel mechanics, we had people who were water wastewater operators, we had people who, we had, we had everything, just equipment operators, people who were members of local union forty-nine, and we had very good interviews. We actually, our number one of two choices, either one of them, I think, would be outstanding, so we tried to get Richard to cough up another hundred thousand dollars and hire them both.
How'd that work then?
He said the buck stops here.
Didn't realize.
But I think Richard would, I mean, we had a long discussion about who we wanted to guess.
So, what action, should we as a council approve your recommendation?
Yep, so we don't want to list any names yet, because nobody has agreed to anything, so we would just, we're just looking here to hire, the hiring committee's number one recommendation, pending the physical and drug test and background check, and then alternatively, if that person declines, going to the next person on the list, because we are comfortable with either one or number two.
Very good.
I'm, yeah, I'm comfortable with your decision, absolutely.
I'll take that as a motion to approve and support. Really fortunate, this one, that I have that kind of interest, great. Any further discussion?
The only thing I'd like to say, that the poor that we interviewed, we could hire anyone.
That's really encouraging.
That's pretty...
That's where we all sat.
Yeah.
That is pretty amazing in a slave market.
Right, yeah.
If these two did not work, we would go, we'd come back and say we'd like to go up number three or four.
Kinda makes you wish we had more openings.
No, no, we don't.
No, that we could afford, we could afford to have that, that's what I'd say.
Yep.
Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Okay.
Opposed? And I believe that unless we have other voters?
Just two others, the two others, one of, I do want to give a shout-out as well, as you guys are saying, for the public works guys, when we got the call from White Lakes, we did reach out to the county as well to see if they needed help, because south of Aurora from here to the town of White Garage is an absolute disaster, I'm sure you've seen that, and made a lot of equipment out there, the county said they had it, but Lakes needed the help. I want to give a shout-out to our public works supervisor, Russ Siltman, never batted an eye, and neither did any of the employees, they never correct about, we've gotta go to another town, or that's extra on our plate, when can I go, how long can I go for? I mean, he's, well, that's the kind of people that you have working for the city, and that's just a real, real nice feeling to have that underneath us, so. The second thing is, is we do need to try and figure out that, that working budget session so we can get that advertised in the paper or in the poster for next week's, so on reviews. Want any more discussion on that or not?
Further discussion, councilor Joss has gone and told...
So, I'll be, I fly in on Thursday, so I literally will be coming from the airport to here, I'm open to it, but just keep in mind that if...
It's delayed.
Or something, yeah, heaven forbid, something's delayed.
Almost to be expected these days, right? And, councilor, you're, you're working hours, you said you had a meeting afterward.
Right, and then I could come after the meeting, but there's no, I don't, there's no, you know, just like the city council meetings, you don't know they're gonna be done at six-thirty.
No, no.
So, I would encourage you to set the meeting, so you think your flight will come in at what time?
It's supposed to be coming in at like four-thirty into hiving, so literally I was coming, don't mind me, I'm disheveled, so just...
So, the earliest would be five-thirty, six?
Yeah.
Only other alternative you could do would be to have one on Monday, the eighteenth, as well.
Monday, the eighteenth?
That's about as late as you could go.
I'm open Monday, the eighteenth as well.
We typically have our union meetings on Mondays, and they haven't set if it's gonna be the second or third Monday, so, but that's usually, well, it's in the evening, more, more towards three or four. But you could do a morning on Monday.
I'm open for a morning.
Do mornings Monday?
I could do a morning.
Does that work for the rest of the councilors?
How, how long is this meeting?
It will just go as long as you, and when you gotta go, you gotta go, in case you're part of it.
Right.
It'll go as long as you guys want, it's...
Is it a better or worse time to start?
The eighteenth in the morning.
Well, I would say, if we got, if the meeting started at eight, is that too early for the office?
I'd put it at eight.
It'll cut into your exercise.
I know, I don't, I didn't get there today either.
By day, yeah.
Well, all right, so, sure.
Sure.
Go for eight o'clock, Monday, pretty good, we'll announce that meeting here, so, and I believe that takes care of all your matters?